First up, we've got the animal control shot shot clinics. Tim, I guess you're gonna you're the chairman, so you take it away, please.
Okay, we had our meeting last on the tenth of last week, animal control meeting. And we talked about the shots and because they usually clinic. So Dee wrote me up a letter that's in our packet, but I'll also read it to you guys. It says, I would like to take the opportunity opportunity to address concern regarding the animal shots clinic that are held on the last Sunday, January and February by the Roscommon County Animal Shelter. The clinics offer discount vaccine price for Roscommon County residents and the general public. Rabies vaccines are $10, distemper vaccines 15 and microchips are 25. These services are offered at a local veterinary offices with total roughly $134.59. Many county residents that cannot afford regular vet care rely on our shot clinics. Their pets immunized and current with county licensing. Without this clinic, many pets would go unvaccinated, causing potential health hazard hazards, concerns for humans and pets. A large reduction in county licensed sales would also be attributed to the cancellation of these clinics. Our concern for January and February 2021 is the possibility of restrictions that may still be in place for COVID-19, limiting us on the amount of people we have attend. Or if even allowed to have the event at all. Most of our clinics have had an average of 200 to 300 residents pass through our shelter during a period of six hours. With social distancing, wearing masks and other COVID-19 precautions, the concern is still great for an event that draws this large of a crowd in these trying times. Director, I'm asking the county board of commissioners to consider rescheduling the clinics to two dates, two late, two dates, both in March or one in in March and one in April. I'm also requesting that a late fee date or before February 28th or March 1st, as stated in article four of the section, article four, section four, A through D of the Roscommon County Animal Control be changed March to April 1st or April 30th. The new scheduled dates due to COVID-19 restrictions for the year 2021 exclusively. This would allow us to extend an extended timeframe in hopes that restrictions may be lifted and that we are able to still offer this service to the public as in the past years. Basically, we don't know if we're gonna have restriction and we don't know if we're gonna have the clinic or how many people show up because she said a lot of people if they don't get just for the pets, just don't get the shots. And then they don't, you know, then they get their license because it costs more to get the license. That's why she explained it to us at the meeting.
Hey, what Tim, what are you, what are you, what are you thinking we should do? Should we wait till after the holidays and?
Yeah, yeah, we we can put it on at our first regular meeting in January. I mean, if we put it on the work session, have her explain it better or we just want to go forward and see if we can do what she's asking for. We're here to try and help the residents out.
Correct, I I agree with that. Mr. Milburn, you're on that committee, anything?
Yeah, I agree with the chairman of the committee, Mr. Chair. We need to be sensitive to the people and help ensure safety in both animals and citizens to ensure complete compliance. It's very important that we waive the fee to help the people out to ensure that we we don't become a super spreader ourselves. So, yeah, I'm in total agreement with our chairman of the of animal control. And I hope that Dee Mendike can come to our first meeting in January to further explain. We may, and I use the word may, even have to possibly push this out depending on how fast the virus, the vaccine virus has rolled out. But we're kind of we've got a shoe from the hip, but I think we have a good framework. And I think Tim has done an excellent job as chairman. Thank you, sir.
Yep, so I I agree with you guys and thanks for your hard work and thanks Dee for the night nice letter explaining it. It's pretty good letter. I think after the holidays, maybe some of this stuff like Mr. Milburn, some of this COVID stuff might shake itself out where we know where we're at. So, um, we'll put it on for the 13th, one way or another, okay? I don't know if we can firm up some dates or not. I don't, I don't mind moving the dates. If we got to move them farther, maybe we'll we'll know a little bit more after the first year. So any further discussion on that from anybody?
Bob, I just have a couple of questions because obviously I wasn't there last week. Um, Tim and Mark, did you guys discuss reaching out to the townships about extending this an additional 30 days? Because traditionally in that ordinance, what happens is the townships are able to sell to that last week of February. And then they turn everything over to the treasurer's office the way the ordinance is written. And then they don't receive anything else. So are we looking at allowing the townships to still continue to sell at a reduced fee as well? Which I don't think they would have a problem for that because for everyone they sell, they get a buck. I mean, that's, but is that something that we want to look at as far as emotion?
That wasn't even brought up.
That's because I wasn't there.
Yes, I wasn't aware of that. I don't know if Dee was either. Like I said, we can push this over and come in and discuss this on a meeting in January.
Yeah, I certainly think that.
I I think that we should, you know, I mean.
I would like to.
Days back, push it back for everybody, but we gotta let the chips know.
We just want to make sure whatever resolution you guys do, allowing a temporary amendment to the ordinance is covers everything we want. Um, my other thought for that is Dee can schedule clinics whenever she wants to is, you know, so I don't think she needs approval to do that. She's probably just wondering, you know, whether or not you guys are going to be interested in pushing it back. So maybe if we let her know to go ahead and schedule the clinics because that's where you're headed, work out the details.
Well, she was more concerned about the COVID restrictions. That's what her biggest issue was. You know, if they can't come out and still call play, you know, they just won't do it.
Mr. Chair, Tim and I could flush it out after the meeting. I appreciate you. That's an excellent question. We'll work on that right after the meeting. I think what's important is for us to come up with some kind of press release to the paper. So the citizens know that this is our intentions. We certainly don't want people rushing in and feeling getting last minute information. So the way I look at it, Tim and I will flesh that out after the meeting. But thanks for bringing that up. That's an excellent point. Obviously, you need to get that out to the townships. Thank you.
Well, obviously, that I feel because it's time sensitive. It's got, we got to discuss and make some decisions on those fees on the 13th and no later because of the fact that Dee decides to, and I have no problem with Dee setting the dates, but right now it's scheduled for the first first Sunday in January. And so the other thing is just communicating to the residents of this county when they are going to be. Whenever. So, all right, anything else from anybody?
We we may have, we may have time to be able to reach out to Dee during the break, Mr. Chair, and I'll and be able to come up with some of those answers.
Well, I don't know about that, but that's up to you guys. All right, anybody else? Okay, on to number two, 2020 final budget adjustments. Jody Valentino.
Hopefully, you all received a bright, cheery, early morning email from me. And if not, I'll go over it very quickly with you. So this is our year end budget adjustment, simply where I take each of those individual line items and figure out how much money I need you to authorize me to move around in the budget, basically, to ensure that we balance once the 2020 budget is finalized. Alicia spent the better part of two weeks essentially doing data entry for bills that every department has put in. And bless her, she did it in a nice, timely manner. So I appreciate that, considering she's the only person in the office for the last week and a half. Well, and Bob was in the office as well, our chairman, so. So we are looking at for the general fund adjustments for 2020's budget, Quick overview of that because it is a couple thousand larger than it normally is for budget adjustments. Made about 315,000 in security and HVAC for buildings and grounds that needed to be adjusted. They were leftovers from last year's security project and then just some major HVAC issues this year. We had $140,000 in additional payments to the MERS defined contribution retirement in order to try to spend down some of that unfunded liability. And that was just luck of our treasurer being able to move some additional monies around based on increased interest rates. And then we had 103,000 in indigent defense fund transfers out that we ended up having to put in for this fiscal year based on their state's fiscal year that started October 1st. Our special funds adjustments will be $1,708,78,332.36. The largest chunk of that that's overage is when we budget for the gypsy moth. We don't actually put in a figure because we have no idea what the spray is going to be. So I think we had like 100,000 in for spray. So we ended up having to move $460,000 for the gypsy moth spray program because obviously 2020 was the biggest season yet that we have sprayed. Of course, 2021 will probably be bigger. So we also had about 353,000 for adjustments to the newly created line items in the indigent defense fund. It wasn't additional money. They just required that we deviate or delineate exactly what items were what. So we just didn't have a budgeted amount for each of those line items. And then the last one was about $190,000 for the new non-budgeted COVID fund that we created in March of this year that, of course, none of us saw coming. So.
Okay, so if you guys go to your regular meeting, motion number two. You need to put a figure in there for 900, 958,991.94. Everybody got that?
Sounds good, Bob.
Pardon me?
Yes, sounds good.
Motion number three is 1,708,332.36. Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for Jody in regards to but final budget adjustments that we do every year at the last meeting in the year? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go to Mike Beatty. COVID update along with vaccinations information. Go ahead.
Okay, so first thing I'll start with is Wednesday Senate Bill 1246 passed. It is expected to be signed next week, which extends the virtual meetings for any reason from January 1st to March 31st. So it's an additional three months as we stand now without having to do any local emergency state of emergencies. In our current COVID case count is 768 right now in Roscommon County. We have 296 that have recovered and 26 deaths. And for vaccinations, which was a good part of our discussion on our LPT meeting. Looks like Roscommon is going to be getting the Moderna vaccine. The Pfizer just has to be distributed. The negative 94 degrees has to be cold storage. It's mainly going to be sent to hospitals and larger organizations. And the Moderna just got just passed FDA approval. So phase one is going to include medical workers, EMS, anybody working in a hospital who has direct patient contact, they can't work remote. And also residents of long term care facilities. And that's expected to begin sometime in January for us here. And I've been working with the last couple of days are all of our local first responders to get numbers for their police fire EMS and how many, how many of their staff want vaccines? And I'll be submitting that most likely Monday to the health department. And then they'll make arrangements from there once they get the vaccine in. The next phase, still don't have a date on that yet, but it'll be phase one B that's going to include essential workers. That's where we'll get police and fire in there. Our EMS will be in the first wave. And then phase one C will be people at high risk for severe illness and people 65 and older. And then in phase two is where it's mass vaccination to the public over 16 years old. Currently, the that's expected to begin probably not until April. Just wait mainly because of number of vaccines that are available this time.
Okay, is that it, Mike?
That's it. Unless you have any questions.
Okay, any questions out there?
Bob, I I don't so much have a question. I just wanted to relay to the rest of the board. I am in contact with Mike Beatty at at least once a week, sometimes three or four times a day when certain things come up. He's doing the best job we could ask. He's doing an excellent job with the resources that he has in this COVID situation, the way it is. Everybody that I've talked to, he's been in contact with them, providing any kind of services that that the county could possibly do at this time with a PPE and keeping everybody, including the nursing homes, updated on the the vaccine rollout and everything that has to do with COVID. So I just want to give him a big pat on the back. Attaboy, job well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. I appreciate that. I do want one more thing about the the vaccines to our responders. At this time, the Moderna vaccine, it comes in a, I guess you call them packages or cases of 10 doses as opposed to the 1,000 vials per for per case for the Pfizer. So it's not yet determined. It's going to depend on our numbers for each department, whether the health department will travel to them or they'll have a day where so many people can come in to the health department, but they're still working those details out and will let me know as soon as they they know.
I would like to agree what Ken just said about Mike. You know, he's getting out there to everybody and I just want to thank you, Mike, for what you're doing.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, I'd just like to add, I'm going to kind of, I was going to report on this in a regular meeting, but I think now is the appropriate time. At our district health department Zoom meeting we had on Wednesday at four o'clock, the health officer went over in the past week, the COVID cases have went down in Rosco, or excuse me, in the entire health department, which is six counties. They were down 33% in Aaronatt, 22% in Claire down. Gladwin was down 9%, Isabella was down 8%, Osceola was down 22% and Roscommon was down 48.2% from the previous week. So, and then last week, they tested 650 people in in our county in Roscommon and 74 tested positive. So, but he emphasized that the rate was going down. I didn't write the percentage down what it was for the whole health department, but he did tell us that Roscommon was down 48%. So that was good news. So hopefully that trend continues. So, and I know Mike personally, because I checked on this, but he's been out there. Sometimes I think he's talking to Melissa at the health department, who is the overall person that heads up this pandemic response there two and three times a day. So I, he's assured me that, and she's assured me that things are going in the right direction and that everything that can be done is being done. So. Anybody else? Okay, well, it's only 20 minutes after nine, so I guess everybody mute yourself and we'll see you back here at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Nice Christmas tree, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
We're all set.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Bob's muted.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bob, you're muted.
Sorry about that. You need me to go start over?
Nope.
Okay, good. All right. On to number three, roll call of board members, please.
Melvin?
Here.
Snyder?
Oh, hold it, hold it. State where you're at, please, for the record, because we are on Zoom.
I am at my home residence, 9460 Oakwood Drive, Roscommon, Michigan.
Okay.
Snyder.
President, I'm here at my office at Roscommon.
Muckenthaler.
President, I am here in my office in the Roscommon County Building.
Milburn.
I'm in Alicia's office of the county building.
Russo.
President, and I'm also here in the county building today.
Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda with the addition of the motion number two total for the general budget adjustments and motion number three with the budget adjustments for the special debt service fund.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Milburn, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler. Any further discussion by any board member at this time? Okay, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yeah.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Item number five. Any public comment at this time, please, from anyone out there?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Um, refers to the work session earlier and I would just like to urge that school employees be considered essential workers along with the law enforcement officers and fire people. And full disclosure, my wife is a school employee. So, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, any other public comment out there, please? Okay, hearing none. On to number six, final claims and accounts, please.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of $85,039.76.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Russo, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler. To okay, class A is an amount of $85,039.76. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, claims and accounts, Michelle.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $231,142.51.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Melvin, seconded by Muckenthaler to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $231,142.51. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Roll call, Michelle.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jody Valentino, administrator controller report, please, item number seven.
Just a quick update. We received an email actually just first thing this morning. So, Tim, you haven't seen it yet. The amendments for the solid waste plan, we now have all the townships finally who have approved with the exception of Osable. And I didn't know, Chairman, if maybe you could reach out to the brand new clerk and explain to them the solid waste plan amendment and then between Tim and I, we can get them what they need. But that way we'll we'll have that finalized. Additionally, we have a quiet, Izzy. Sorry about that. So we have an MSB restart program grant that Brenda Batchelder has been working on with Seago County and a couple of the others as an alliance. And for that, it is $40,250. That is specific to be used for reimbursement of wages for processing these restart program grants. It's in an odd position for us because obviously we contract out. So what Brenda and I have discussed is in 20, I'll go ahead and make a special fund for this restart program grant, deposit the money by the end of the year. In 2021, we will do a essentially a reimbursement to economic development for the money that we pay to them for outsourcing for Brenda's services. And then after that, we'll create essentially a special fund with the same amount of money in order for EDC to have a special project fund. It needs to be its own special project fund so that the money can stay right there and roll over annually in case they need to use it for matching grants. I think Brenda's big thought was pushing towards a broadband type of project for the area. So I thought that was a great idea. So we are working on that. Additionally, I was able to attend several virtual township meetings in regards to the designated assessor. But I'll be honest, I wasn't really needed. Either Jamie Howserman was able to do it or one of the commissioners had done such a good job talking to the townships that I got to stay quiet and listen just in case there were questions. So that was really nice. We do have one last payroll, December 30th, and then we will begin the year end processes for payroll and W2s. So just a quick heads up, and that is obviously we divided everything by 27 essentially this year. So I do have a position posting that I'm working on for the director of buildings and grounds that will be going out the first week of January. In talking to Commissioner Melvin, who is obviously in charge of our buildings and grounds, we've come to the conclusion that we're going to post it and open it to interviews for both internal and external candidates at the same time. Just, just at this point, we've done internally. We want to get out there and see what we've got going for us kind of across the board at this point. Our GIS position will also be posted, but I am waiting for the wage and compensation committee. They obviously have had a couple of members that ended up on quarantine and didn't have virtual. So they got kind of sideways into not being able to Zoom meeting. If you have not heard, we did have 100% survey completion for the gypsy moth program this year. What I am going to tell you is that we had one, two, three, four full time employees and two part time employees that managed to survey 100% this year. Daniel and Julie Crick did a fabulous job getting everything, getting everything together. So that was very, very impressive and they'll start looking at the data here in January as well. And then finally, we do have all of our COVID related grants that are current and in compliance or finalized. We have three that are called CESF grants. Those are the ones for the prosecutor, sheriff and courts. We do have a CRLGG grant, which is the general fund grant money that they gave us in lieu of the revenue sharing. We have that CBGB grant that I'm still working with that gentleman on trying to figure out exactly what he's going to allow us to purchase and expend on because that one's a little bit more specific. And then we do have the hazardous pay and first responder pay reimbursement program grants. That one is 100% complete and finalized. So that's it.
Okay, anybody have any questions in regards to the controller, administrator controller report, please, from any commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to go on the record. I'd like to thank Jody Valentino and MSU, the citizens I have privilege to represent. We certainly appreciate the 100% completion gypsy moth. It's a big deal. And I know we're heading in the right direction. Thank you so much, Jody. If you could relay that, relay that to the crowd, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, any other commissioner have anything in regards to Jody's report, please?
Well, I'd just like to thank Jody. She went above and beyond working through her recovery.
Well, I'd just like to thank Jody. She went above and beyond working through her recovery. When she shouldn't have been working, she was working at this critical time, year-end, to finalize everything and with other people out of the office. Just thanks for the job you did.
Okay, anyone else in regards to Controller, Administrator Controller Report?
Yeah, and I'd like to extend my thank you out there to Jody also. And not just for the last couple of weeks, but throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Jody. You did a good job.
Yep.
We appreciate it.
As Chairman, I've alluded to this before, but I'll tell you something, as far as the work that Jody has done on the budget for next year, this year's budget, by getting our final figures to us, and also next year's budget, I think, I think are up and down. I can't thank her enough, so thank you, Jody. Okay, item eight, correspondence. Item A is Roscommon County Commission on Aging 2020 Financial Statement. We always get that in December of every year. Item B is Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority. Item C is the Roscommon County Economic Development Corporation. And item D is a letter of interest from April higher in regards to interest for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board. So that'll be something that we'll probably, that we'll be putting on to be voted on in first meeting in January. Any commissioner have any questions in regards to A, B, C, or D under correspondence, please? Okay, monthly, number nine, monthly department reports. There were none. Item 10, any visitors out there that would like to be recognized at this time, please? Okay, hearing none. Any unfinished or new business with any commissioner at this time, please? Okay, hearing none. Michelle, take a drink of water, and we'll let you get started on the motions and resolutions, please.
Okay. Move to approve the resolution for interlocal agreement for Roscommon County designated assessor Jamie Howserman. Interlocal agreement for Roscommon County Designated Assessor. Whereas MCL 211.10G establishes the requirement for a designated assessor in each county, and that such designation should be made before December 31st, 2020. And whereas the county designated assessor is designated by an interlocal agreement executed between the County Board of Commissioners and a majority of the assessing districts in the county. And whereas the individual designated as the county's designated assessor must be approved by the State Tax Commission. Whereas the interlocal agreement by and between the County of Roscommon, a political subdivision of the state of Michigan, here and after referred to as the County, Osable Township, Bacchus Township, Denton Township, Garrish Township, Higgins Township, Lake Township, Lion Township, Markey Township, Nestor Township, Ridgefield Township, Roscommon Township, and Village of Roscommon, each a political subdivision of the state of Michigan, each here and after referred to as an assessing district, and collectively referred to as the assessing districts, is entered into pursuant to the Urban Cooperation Act of 1967, Public Act VII of 1967, XS, Sess, as amended, MCL 124.501 et sec, and the General Property Tax Act, Public Act 206 of 1893, as amended by Public Act 660 of 2018, MCL 211.10G, for the purpose of designating an individual to serve as the county's designated assessor. Whereas to meet the requirement of appointing a designated assessor for Roscommon County, the assessing districts in Roscommon County and the County of Roscommon have agreed to designate Jamie Howserman, MMAO, as designated assessor. And whereas the interlocal agreement naming the designated assessor shall be binding upon all assessing districts upon its approval by the County Board of Commissioners, the designated assessor, a majority of the assessing districts, and the State Tax Commission. And whereas, the designated assessor shall only act as the assessor of record for an assessing district when required by the State Tax Commission pursuant to MCL 211.10G or upon direct action of the governing board of an assessing district. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that Roscommon County approves the interlocal agreement naming the Roscommon County Equalization Director, Jamie Howserman, who is an individual qualified and certified by the State Tax Commission as a master assessing officer, to be the county designated assessor for Roscommon County. Yet further resolved that the Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman of the board to effectuate the necessary documents to implement the board authorized action.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
The motion is made by Commissioner Melvin, Milburn, excuse me, Commissioner Melvin, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time in regards to motion number one? Okay, Michelle, roll call, please.
Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle, motion number two, please.
Move to approve the 2020 general fund budget adjustments as presented for a total of nine-hundred-fifty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
So move.
Second, motion is made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Snyder to approve the 2020 general fund budget adjustments in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time, please? Hearing none, roll call.
Milburn?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion three, please.
Move to approve the 2020 Special Endeavor Service Fund budget adjustments as presented for a total amount of one-million-seven-hundred-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll make that motion.
Here.
Motion made by Mr. Muckenthaler, seconded by Mr. Milburn. Thank you. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Um, Melvin?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion four, please.
Move to reappoint Gerald McCormick to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Snyder to appoint Gerald McCormick to the Roscommon County Housing Authority Board. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion five, please.
Move to reappoint Virginia Otto to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mr. Melvin, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler to reappoint Virginia Otto to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board. Any comment from any commissioner at this time, please? Hearing none, roll call.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion six, please.
Move to reappoint Sally Tewilliger to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
I'll make that.
So move.
Motion is made by Mr. Muckenthaler, seconded by Mr. Russo. Did I catch that right? Okay. Any further discussion from any commissioner? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion seven.
Move to reappoint Carol Newman to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
So move.
Motion.
Okay, I'll second it, Bob.
Motion is made by Mr. Snyder, seconded by Mr. Russo to report Carol Newman to the Roscommon County Housing Advisory Board Committee. Any further comment from any commissioner? Hearing none, roll call.
Melvin?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion eight, please.
Move to reappoint Tom Shepherd to the Veterans Affairs Board for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mr. Melvin, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler to reappoint Tom Shepherd to the Veterans Affairs Board. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Milburn?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion nine, please.
Move to reappoint Don Maras to the Veterans Affairs Board for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Melvin, Melvin, seconded by Mr. Milburn to appoint, reappoint Don March to the Veterans Affairs Board. Any further discussion from any commissioner? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item 10, or my motion 10, please.
Move to reappoint Al Schultz to the Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mr. Milburn, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler to reappoint Al Schultz to the Airport Advisory Committee. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Melvin? Snyder?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion 11, please, Michelle.
Move to reappoint Dave Davis to the Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
So move.
Second, motion is made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Snyder to reappoint Dave Davis to the Airport Advisory Committee. Any further discussion, please? Hearing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion 12, please.
Move to appoint Jody Valentino to the Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Mr. Melvin, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler to appoint Jody Valentino to the Airport Advisory Board Committee. Any further discussion, please, from any commissioner? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Melvin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion 13.
Move to reappoint Bill Leesum to the Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
So move.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Who made the motion, please? It's Mr.
Russo.
Motion made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Milburn to reappoint Bill Leesum to the Airport Advisory Committee. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Melvin?
Yes.
Muckenthaler?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Take a break.
You're welcome.
All right. On to, on to number 13, committee reports. Who wants to go first? Get your hand up. Mr. Russo?
Only thing I have to report is claims and accounts. Houghton Lake is one inch above winter level, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Muckenthaler was next, I believe.
I had animal control on the 10th and claims and accounts. That's it.
Okay. Who's going next? Mr. Milburn?
District Health with yourself, Mr. Chairman. Animal Control with Mr. Batim, with Mr. Muckenthaler, and we had the NMCAA Zoom yesterday. And I'd like to ask that Kerry Bachmann and Shannon Phelpsby on our first meeting work session on January 9th. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I didn't make the COA meeting because I was excused. I asked Mr. Fischel, our chairman, for an excuse, because my son had an advent play at the Harley, and I certainly wanted to make that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Melvin?
Yes, I had, on the 15th, I had LEPC and the agenda meeting. And then Bob and I have been keeping in contact at least once a week because we're not meeting each other in the office anymore on a regular basis. Also, Higgins Lake is right where it's supposed to be for this time of the year, and David, I did notice yesterday I took some cat food over to the animal shelter for a donation, left it on their front porch, and called them up and told them it was there. And then just took a little drive down around Houghton Lake, and I saw people walking out on the ice to go fishing already.
There, I seen on Facebook, there was, there are people ice fishing over on off East Houghton Lake Drive.
There were people on Lake St. Helen last Tuesday.
Oh, so both Houghton Lake and Lake St. Helen are froze over. Higgins Lake is nowhere's near freezing, it's still open water all over.
I don't know if St. Helen's froze over, but I just know they were out on some ice.
Yeah, be very cautious and careful.
Correct, right. Okay, as far as the chairman is concerned, we had a, on the 10th, we had an eight o'clock EDC Zoom meeting. And on the 12th, I had the Osable Township meeting, presented the designated assessor to them, they passed it that day. Was in contact with Bacchus Township. Unfortunately, because of a lack of technology, they didn't meet in January, or excuse me, in December. Agenda meeting on Wednesday, and then that night, I had Ridgefield Township, who they passed the designated assessor also. And at four o'clock this past Wednesday, along with Mr. Milburn, we did have a Zoom meeting with the Central Michigan District Health Department, and I alluded to some of the figures in regards to that meeting earlier in our work session, so. That's all I have at this time.
Hey, Bob, just one quick one. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Michelle, and Eric, and Jody, and yourself, and everyone else trying to get our airport committee squared away. I'd like to thank everybody. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, item 14 on a public comment. Do we have any public comment from anyone, please, at this time? Last one of the day, or I should say, last one of the year.
Well, if no one else is there, Bob, I'd just like to jump in and wish everybody a Merry Christmas, stay safe, and a Happy New Year, because we won't be getting together before then. I'll be doing my part. I won't see any of my six grandkids or two great-grandkids. I'll be staying home and staying safe, and hope everybody else does the same. Thank you.
Hey, can you actually remind, can you reminded me of something? The organizational meeting is scheduled for January 4th at 10 o'clock AM. Am I correct?
That's what I have on my calendar.
Yes.
Yes, that is like fast.
All right, I just wanted to double-check and bring that up to everybody. The organizational meeting, and it is purely only for organizational meeting, gentlemen. So, January 4th at 10 o'clock AM. All right. Anybody else have any comments, please? The other thing, I'm, you know, whether it's politically correct or not, but Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Same to all my commissioners.
So move, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Second.
Item 15, entertain a motion for adjournment, please.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Milburn, seconded by Mr. Russo to adjourn. Everyone in favor, in favor, saying a aye. Motion is made by Mr. Milburn, seconded by Mr. Russo to adjourn. Everyone in favor, in favor, saying a aye.
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 Goodbye, everybody.